Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of the Gig Harbor Planning Commission to order for Thursday, April 20th, 2023. It's 5:33 and we're ready to go. So first is a roll call. Commissioner Bradbury, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Burkhar. He's gonna be late, I guess. Mr. Soltis, Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Snodgrass. Okay, we are here, all accounted for anyway. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Chair will entertain a motion for the approval of minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion in a second, approve the minutes. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Michelle, do we have anyone in the waiting room for public comment?
We do, but I believe it is just a spectator.
Okay, so I won't go ahead and read then the statement. And then that brings us to the staff presentation agenda item, which is the comprehensive plan periodic update, community design. Carl and Robin, take it away.
Thank you so much. So, oh my goodness. Thank you for your patience as some of us get oriented here. I will go ahead and share my screen. But just sort of as a, so last time, two weeks ago, on the 20th, we went through the harbor. I know I'm sort of seeing how this goes, how, in terms of timing. If I'm presenting too much by going through each of the goals and policies, I thought maybe I would skim a little bit and your commission stopped me with questions. But I didn't, there's actually more material and will be increasingly thicker elements as we move forward. So I was delighted on the 20th that commissioners had, I shouldn't be surprised, but I was, I guess, a little bit surprised that everybody had read the elements that I sent out and were prepared with great questions. And I think we had a great discussion. So with that understanding that hopefully commissioners have had a chance to look at the community design element, I am not going to spend as much time reading every single policy and, but just stop me if anything sort of jumps out and we'll kind of, this will be an iterative process, I guess, as we go through this. So I will go ahead and show my screen. Yeah, it's covered up. I have, I have experience with technology. I swear. The little pane down there covers it up.
It's not showing up on your screen.
Right, I know. That's, sorry. Fix Village. No, no, sorry. It's right underneath there. It's underneath that. Oh, the people do this every day. Here, let me move this. Just move the whole thing over. Oh, sure.
Teams is covering up the button that she needs to click on to make it before it screens.
Very silly. I apologize. Okay, so indeed, we are going to be going through the community design element, which is chapter four of the comprehensive plan. The vision not as articulated and I will sort of parenthetically say that, you know, one of the issues that came up during our last meeting and which Commissioner Brown brought up is there's, the elements do not have a cohesive structure. They're all like independent, like somebody put this one together, put this one together. I know it didn't roll out that way, but some of the elements have a vision statement. Some have an introduction that has more or less detail and is more or less expansive. That's one of the things that I want to address when we do our update. I want each of the elements to look and feel much the same, have the same structure and not be these sort of independent little beings. Anyway, the vision statement such as it is, the purpose of community design is to invite human presence, arouse curiosity, allow for interaction and provide functional and visual links. Why adopt this as an element? The, the purpose was to enhance Gig Harbor's sense of place in a way that reflects the community's values and deep connections to the history and traditions that distinguish Gig Harbor from other cities in the region. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago about a sense of place, what sets us apart? And some other examples of communities that have maybe a differently crafted sense of place and identity. So the question, one of the many questions is, have, have we captured in the existing element that sense of place? And if not, what needs to be tweaked, added, taken away, et cetera? So I will go through the goals. I'm not going to read through all of the policies. I tried to condense them as much as possible. So we would, you know, be able to get home before 10 o'clock. So the first goal and community design is sort of the subheading within community design, which is interesting. The goal is to, here is assure that new commercial and residential projects include an active interface between the public and private realms. And if you could go through the policies here, people spaces, public orientation, keeping commercial structures in the foreground and encouraging houses that engage with the neighborhood. If anything jumps out there, questions, things that don't seem to make sense. I'm sorry?
SOPS.
SOPs.
Sure. Okay. I thought maybe those are the.
Oh, no, that is, I, yes, I apologize for the typos. This, yeah, I tiny, tiny bit rushed. I apologize. And then down below, yeah, the solid void that should be 30 to 35% that very last entry on windows. And much of this, so that, a lot of what we will see as we go through the element, we will note is, exists and is reflected in our existing design manual. And then some things deviate a little bit. So to the extent there's overlap or that we are already implementing much of these policies. Again, it's a chance for us to, you know, look at again, see what makes sense, see what doesn't make sense. SOPs clearly do not make any sense. But yeah, noting, noting the typo there. Anything else that sort of jumps out at you or is noteworthy or questions that arise?
Yeah, the encourage generous use of windows on house fronts. If you have a westward facing, you're gonna allow an awful lot of heat and sunlight during the summer. And sunlight is great, the heat's not. And so we might want to, to be consistent with our energy plan to have a little bit of qualification on that.
So balance between energy efficiency and, and the visual aesthetic of having, yep.
I would comment that under public orientation, first bullet there, to me, it's not quite clear. It includes a great deal in there for commercial structure. But because of the extensiveness of what it says in the bullet, I'm left not clear on what being ten by a commercial structure. For example, plazas or common areas and all slides, storefronts. Commercial structure may typically be just a store. So it's not quite clear.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm, I am gonna, I've got a number of different slides. So if I move too fast or not fast enough, please, please weigh in. The next goal is to provide functional links between developed and developing parcels. Again, linking with paths, pedestrian paths will come up again and again. Limiting pavement, which, which we do currently. The user-friendly bus stops, I thought, was, was kind of an interesting tuck in there. And then master trails plan for the city. Comments, questions that arise with the, with this goal?
I have a question about the master trails plan. It says develop. Now, I believe in the past few years, we've completed a plan, right? Is that now done, the master trail plan or in the developing phase?
It's a great question and I actually don't know the answer. I know we've talked about that.
The county maintains a trails plan out on the peninsula. And if you look at that plan, it actually does travel through the city. They've got kind of an open space and trails plan. The city, you know, we do have, we do have some mention or we do have some plans for trails within the pros plan, but I don't think it's as comprehensive as something like what this is describing.
All encompassing.
I don't, I don't believe so, but we'd have to look at that more carefully.
Yeah, and see where that's at.
My more generic question is where it says that the city should do something. And it's five years, four years later, and we have either done it or we haven't. So we might wanna screen through and be sure if we completed it, do we need to keep talking about it? Has it become maintained and trails plan or something like that?
Absolutely. And that's, and that's part of the update process, right? Is to see what, what we've already accomplished. And so, yeah, right, do we maintain it? Is, have we, have we been surprised by something that we then need to incorporate or something? So, so yeah, so the wording on something like that, if we had adopted would be, you know, maintain or expand or what have you, right? And that will be true for all of the elements. There are a number of things that are referenced that we have incorporated. Here, it's interesting to me that, that there isn't an explicit reference to our design manual. It incorporates a lot of things that are duplicated in our design manual, but it doesn't say, you know. And I don't know how that necessarily would work, but if you already are implementing, you know, the percentages of windows or something for, as an example, then is that, you know, maintain, reevaluate? Or are we actually going to consider amending our design manual for things that don't make sense? Like maybe a flat requirement for, for glazing as a percentage?
Commissioner Snodgrass.
So my question is partially related to that, master trails. Because I know with the city's purchase of, of the property adjacent to Donkey Creek Park, there is a goal in mind of connecting Cushman to historic downtown, which a lot of trails programs because of the way they are, they're, they're long-term projects. So I would assume that any master trails plan we have would actually be about a 25-year, you know, ongoing iter process. Anyway, but with that, I mean, this would link to the gateways portion. Somehow it seems, I wasn't here for the harbor discussion, so if this is a repeat, I apologize. But we have the primary park that, anyway, the primary park where we have the music, Scansy. So on this end, we have a big, largely unused parking lot. We have some commercial development feels a little less connected. We have the big park that kind of connects to some restaurants, all that development. Then we have this big stretch before you get to popular development on the other side. Right in the middle of that is where that section of land just purchased meets Donkey Creek, meets the Harbor History Museum. This seems like a critical place to create a gateway to the historic downtown. Please put bike racks in it because I immediately thought that I, as a family, walking down those hills or down Cushman or whatever, if people have their bikes, they're gonna want somewhere to park said bikes. But that, creating that interactive, facilitating interaction with both, you know, the downtown, the parks, limiting our traffic to downtown where we can. But, you know, this is where we have the interaction of the shipbuilding of the Indian cultural history of our area. But we kind of lack, it would be a great place for signage, for an interaction to pull people in and hopefully create them. Even with that, you have Harbor History Museum, you have good, good sidewalks, they're wide. But you have these two or three commercial buildings that don't really connect. And then you have this little park where we have the statue now, finding ways to connect those. But that brings me to my other question. Somewhere it says, developing and developed connections between developed and developing areas. I know with comprehensive plans, they're sort of a, they're forward looking, they're not really backward looking. But are there ways for us to address in this, to some extent correcting mistakes of the past, but also creating those links between developed and developing areas?
You bet. Yeah, I mean, connectivity came up when we talked about the harbor. It will come up again, but that's, that, that is one of the themes that I think is, needs to be strengthened. And I've, I've heard comments along the same lines that we have a lack of connectivity between whether it's points of interest, whether it's, you know, where, where the action is downtown. And so it exists in a number of places. We'll be talking again about that in, when we, when we get into the transportation element, right?
I was just about to say, because the bus stops and the friendly bus stops, the attractive bus stops, you know, whatever, will be a key piece of this and especially with the harbor piece.
Absolutely. I agree. And there is, again, there's, there's duplication between the different elements by design or not. So some of these things we have seen and we'll see again. Go ahead.
Last thing I'm going to say because it went to what you said just now about there's no link to the design plan. There's something that I read in it that basically should be linked to the urban forestry plan. It had to do with preserving tree canopy and all of that. And that sounds like a really not fun, detail-oriented job that you guys are going to have to do. Run through this and seeing where it should be linked. But yes, sort of, we could take out a fair number of the words in this comp plan by stating more general goal and linking it to the more detailed policy or plans that involve that.
Gotcha.
I would comment that we need to refine what we need, need by master trails. The reality is there's very little opportunity left in the city to develop actual trails or walking paths because there's been so much development already. And so a lot of that is going to be, for example, sidewalk. Maybe we build sidewalks to connect spaces rather than quote trail. And our definition should be precise enough to address.
You know, for the record, that Commissioner Burkhar has joined us.
Hello.
Hello.
Right. And just, just also a reminder, again, on the topic of duplication and maybe some streamlining. And, and this is something that our consultants will help with. I mean, part of this is, you know, finding out where we are and then where we want to be. And if things are unnecessarily duplicative, so talking about master trails, maybe a reference to our, our pros plan and pros element, parks, rec and open space is its own element. So there's certainly an inventory that's, that's being updated within that or will be. But that's, that's where you would expect to read more about a master plan and, and what that looks like. So, you know, duplication isn't necessarily a bad thing, but you know, if it's, if it's making it, if it's not consistent or it's, it's just making it too voluminous, then we can definitely trim it down and focus on, on the key, key points. Okay, I must do anything else. I'm gonna keep moving. Create commercial centers, which provide.
Question here.
Oh.
Mister.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, bad button management on my part.
Should I go back?
Just wanted to, no, just wanted to check out last week, did you guys log as a question to put to the community? The issue of more or less parking and asphalt in the city?
We talked about parking quite a bit.
I think you could put that in there. Are you happy with the level of parking in Gig Harbor?
Right.
Are you unhappy? Because we all know, I mean, at least I think we all know here that, that all the asphalt downtown at least is, is a pretty big eyesore and it's there, I think. If I correctly am wrong, it's because there are specific requirements for each new building to have X amount spaces available. And that adds up over time to a lot of spaces that look like they're almost always vacant, in my humble opinion. So I think that's some, some kind of question along that area would be appropriate.
And, and in the harbor element, there, the, the question comes up actually a few times about reducing the parking requirement. And there's been discussion, active discussion with the downtown waterfront alliance about the implications of parking on, on businesses. Not the aesthetics and, and environmental issues aside, just is it, is it also harmful for our, our downtown businesses?
Commissioner Snodgrass.
Well, it's, it's on the parking because as someone who lives like right by all of that, 80% of the time, maybe 75, there's too much parking downtown. But every time there's music downtown, every time there's festival, when the weather starts getting nice and the restaurants and all that, there's not enough parking. And so it's, it becomes a trick of how we manage that and how we encourage people to park at Park and Ride. Okay, if we can, I don't know, did the trolley go away completely during COVID? Did it come back? Did it?
It came back in a limited capacity, I believe, last year. Now, this year, we're negotiating with Pierce Transit to try and get it back on the road at all. And part of that is because of, they're having trouble with drivers, trying to find people to drive it. They're also needing to retrofit it for ADA accessibility, which has proven to be a bit of a design challenge, apparently. So there is active negotiations going on with Pierce Transit right now to make sure we get it back on the road and hopefully with more regularity as it used to be before COVID.
Because, yeah, for the restaurants and all of that, most people will probably be going to walkaways. But I'm less inclined to go downtown, buy something there and then hike up one of those hills with stuff in my hands. So.
Bannicular.
A suggestion, could we add food carts to encourage limited out, not food carts, food trucks?
Food trucks.
Outdoor activities to food products.
Timely comment, yes. Food, food trucks. Okay, let's see. So, yeah. Commercial centers which provide high levels of public amenities in areas determined appropriate for commercial, high-density residential or mixed uses. Developing common areas and the limited outdoor activities, including food trucks. Anything else on, on this goal? A bygone era, right? When was the last time you saw a telephone booth? Exactly. I think, I think we can get rid of, yes, I, I chuckled when I saw that. Okay. Moving on. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Burkhar.
Oh, thanks. Can you guys hear me? Can you hear me? Hello. Oh, you got me? What was, what's, maybe I missed it. What was the point of limited, the word limited in the outdoor activities?
It's a good question. I think the, the last bullet point, limited in terms of density. So, you know, numbers of carts in a, you know, in a block or something, you don't, I, just saying. That's, I didn't write it, you know, but that's my understanding. Or square footage, so not necessarily dominating the sidewalk or streetscape. Just, but we could change that, right? If we don't want to put limits. But I think having, you know, food carts or flower carts or whatever, you know, all along the sidewalk could get a little, wherever there.
Yeah, no, I was just kind of questioning the context of it.
Yeah, okay, that's my, that's my reading of it.
Sure, thanks.
Sure. Okay, moving on.
Is the context there things like the art spare in the summer, when you say limited?
Um, the limited, I, I was really just looking at the, the kinds of things. I mean, it, it calls out farmer's market, which is different, and outdoor dining. I was more thinking about, you know, again, like a, I don't know, you know, hot dog stand or something that would, you know, potentially be, you know, year round or, or whatever. I don't know. I don't know what the, what the other maybe intent or context would be.
The context here, though, we have to keep in mind is relative to outdoor common area. So we were, we require a certain num, a certain square footage of, we require a certain, certain level of square footage for any commercial development based on the size of the development. And so what they're saying is limiting, encouraging uses within the common areas, but, but limiting those uses to certain things, right? So it, so I think that, I think limiting is probably a poor use of words in this, in the context because we're not really trying to limit them. What we're trying to do is just define what could be allowed within that common area. Does that make sense? I think limited is the problem, yeah.
Right, right. Yeah, I think, and again, these are, these are supposed to be sort of implementing or in line with the, you know, public amenities in areas appropriate. And then, yeah, the limited kind of, kind of works against that. So, yeah. Maybe, maybe put that in a much. Maybe, maybe put that in a much different way. If we want to talk about, you know, square footage or whatever, that, that, that can, yeah, that can. Be articulated, probably better than that, okay. Next, we have enhance the city's sense of place by preserving prominently visible parcels for aesthetically pleasing development. So significant views, and we have mapping for most of this. Preserve corner lots, those are seen as being significant. I like the more stately structures that have a more stately appearance. Again, tied to the city's identity, designate enhancement zones, which we do, and, and I've got some maps to show those. And cluster green spaces. Comments, questions?
This goes to one of Commissioner Brown's comments, this would be one of really good areas to have pictures.
Oh gosh, yeah. Pictures, graphics, that's something I've communicated and talked to our consultants about quite a bit. That was one of the threshold conversations that we had when we were, you know, deciding who to go with. And we made it very clear that that was a, a pretty important part of what we envisioned the document to be. Which is not dry text, but, so the, the images that I have for this. Actually come out of our design manual. So here are the designated visually sensitive areas, and they're not named strangely enough. Or at least not in our mapping, they're just shown. A, B, C, north to south, and the blow up, so here's. A, and you all probably know all the, the. Streets and intersections better than I will. And then B. And this includes enhancement corridor, which is, you know, around State Route sixteen. Interchange nodes also related to the highway and then prominent parcels. And these all come out of our design manual. But there's no specific mapping in, let's see, did it show all of them? Let's see, did I skip? What happened to be? Oh dear. Well. Be snuck out somewhere, it's, that's odd, sorry about that. But you get, you get the gist, I guess the, the question, if, if we go back to, to the overall sort of map. If, if we wanted to change this or ask questions about how these are designated, why they're designated. It would be something that we would need to change in our design manual and, and they're linked, but not explicitly. So for me, that's, it's sort of odd that they call out visually sensitive areas and don't reference. The design manual, which is where our mapping and where our, our standards come from, so what you can do in these areas. But I wanted to just show where they are, and again, you can see basically along the State Route sixteen.
Commissioner Burke, as is he end up?
Please.
Oh, yeah, thanks. So an enhancement corridor, is that? I guess, is that being identified to try to mask it, or? I guess, what, what's the purpose of? Of this in the design manual?
It's, it's, is to both screen and, and sort of shine a, a light on, on the design. So different performance standards are, are more restrictive in. In enhancement and visually sensitive areas, primarily screening. Yeah.
Yeah. In the, the dark highlighted small properties in that, is that, I missed the key, was that? Are those specifically identified? Oh, prominent.
Prominent parcels.
Okay, and that's part of. Were those historic parcels or just?
No, no, it's a, it's a visual, you know, something that you see. You know, from, again, from the highway or as, it's sort of, you know, what's, what do you see as you're either driving by Gig Harbor? Or you're getting off, off of the highway, so.
I see, they're identified as prominent, yeah, points that kind of viewed by, okay.
Right.
Yeah.
We want to focus more design attention, because that's sort of speaking to what Gig Harbor is. Or, or, yeah, again, going back to the sense of place and consistency of design.
Oftentimes, those prominent parcels are on corner lots as well. So there, there are areas that sort of frame, in some ways, frame neighborhoods or frame sort of a gateway into, let's say, downtown. Gig Harbor, for instance, the corner.
They're the first impression, if you will.
Right.
Correct.
Exactly.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I would just add that maybe potential outreach would be, yeah, some pictures, specific pictures of those areas. And in what we're trying to protect or, or enhance.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thanks.
Yes, absolutely, this doesn't, this doesn't tell you anything. Particularly if you, yeah.
Shows you where the freeway is.
Mr. Salters?
I was gonna say, I, I think I'm at least confused with this graphic. I don't know if the square is part of the visual area or if it's just the highlighted hatch things. And so, pretty sure somebody opened up a comprehensive plan, sees this, it's gonna say, is it gonna be quite confused?
And this doesn't even live in the comprehensive plan, right, this lives in our ordinance. No, 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 that's, that's a honest mistake, you would assume, because I'm including it. I just wanted to provide some visual to go along with the, the goals and policies. That call out the visual, visually sensitive areas. But there's nothing in the comprehensive plan specifically. That, that shows this, there's a, there's a map and we'll get to it that, that calls out districts, neighborhood districts. But there's nothing specific to visually sensitive areas.
Don't worry about this because you'll be confused later.
We, we have, we have now put this, these maps, so when I first got to Gig Harbor. This is, we literally were using these maps in order to determine if something was within the enhancement corridor. Or whether it was in one of the visual interchange nodes with, which in, with, within the visual interchange nodes. We allow for a more open concept, so you don't want the screening within those areas. So those are at, you know, where you, where we have Starbucks over here, for instance, on Willatchit. Visual interchange, we want people from the freeway to come in to, to be invited into town, so you want to be able to see it. In between, you don't want people to see all of the development that's going on, you just want tree lined highway. Which is what we've done a fairly decent job of here in Gig Harbor, I think. For the most part, there's some areas that are open now, and some of that is because Wash Dot came in and decided to take down some of the trees. That we were relying on to help us with our enhancement corridors. But we can't do anything about that because it's in their right of way. But now we've taken these maps and put them in our GIS, so GIS layers. So now we can actually drill right down to, to the parcel level to really figure out what is in and what is out. So from a review standpoint and actually from, from the public standpoint, much easier now than relying on maps like this that really are unhelpful. You know, when it comes down to it, so. But I think a, a good question here, though, to ask Planning Commission might be, is this still what we want in Gig Harbor? Is this still, does this still ring true? I mean, are we still? Do we still care about prominent parcels? Do we still care about enhancement corridors? Is this something that we do want to continue to maintain? Are the tree lined highways something that, that still resonate with Gig Harbor? Residents?
So, this is, I'll go, okay?
Commissioner Bradbury, could you, yeah, could you speak?
Of this particular passage, it is kind of wordy, hard to follow. So I would just simply recommend wordsmithing. Clear it up a little bit. But I, I do think that we value the idea of it. Nice corridor to drive through.
As the California transplant, I can tell you, it was one of the first things that we commented on. When we made our way up here was how amazing that drive was. And there's, there's nothing like that anywhere, anywhere in California, frankly, unless you're in the middle of nowhere. So, I personally, I, I agree, it is, it's stunning to. Drive that, even when I'm stuck.
About Carl's question.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, Commissioner Jordan.
Hey, yeah, thank you, I'd like to, you know, directly answer Carl's good question. Excuse me, I'm not feeling great. From my perspective, the natural, yes, we want to maintain these corridors, but I, I'd like to propose a bit of a twist. And that twist is more from a natural perspective and less from a built perspective. I'm not very concerned about seeing nice houses on my drive, I would much rather see trees and. Scapes that, you know, if there's any opportunity to look at our, our water or the. The harbor or anything like that, so my recommendation would be focusing on these view corridors from a, a natural skate perspective. And less built. Thank you.
I would say I agree with Commissioner Jordan, I think it's important to have these tree line corridors.
I agree with that.
Right.
I think my question would be better defining what, what the view corridor is, what view are we trying to preserve? Because I look at. I think I'm reading this map properly, I'm not really sure. But I think, I think the oval is right around the Willatchit City Center exit, is that correct?
It's actually Borghen.
Oregon.
So if it's around how they interact with sixteen. Honestly, when I read view corridors, I did not even, sixteen was not in my thought process. So. Is it, is it a view corridor or is it framing how people enter the city from sixteen?
Right, two, two different things, right, but all encompassed on the map, so that. Visual interchange node is, as Carl described, what do you see when you're getting off, on and off, but off the freeway?
So much of like preserving a view corridor is most of us think of view corridors, it's more how we frame. Someone's first interaction in off sixteen and into.
Right. Driving along the, the beautiful tree lined highway, and then, again, as Carl suggested, oh, I need coffee. There happens to be a little commercial center here, nicely designed, of course, and, and so you know. You know where to get off to, to have, you know, goods and services or what have you.
I think of it a little bit like if you've ever been on any of the New York turnpikes, you know, back where they've got toll roads. You're driving along freeway, you're, feel like you're out in the country, and then all of a sudden you come to where you can get off the road. You're still, you don't have to pay a toll to get off and on, but there's a rest area, and it's almost like a, a city, a little mini city. It's got a store, a gas station, has all the little things you need and you turn off, it's kind of a rest area. That's kind of a similar idea to what they're, what, what's been proposed here with the enhancement corridors and, and the visual interchange nodes.
Commissioner Burke?
I, yeah, I think I was kind of along the same lines as Commissioner Snodgrass about. Yeah, maybe more defining whether it's like Carl was just speaking of the view towards a. Commercial area as opposed to the other areas where we would want to maintain a view of more of a natural state. I mean, your drive along sixteen provides some, some pretty spectacular views of the Olympic Mountains on a nice day. Or Mount Rainier also, and, and maybe being able to kind of define the natural. And then also a, a more commercial centered view where it's appropriate. I would think would be important.
And I think, you know, the, I, I think that those are all really good points, and I, I want to keep in mind that the, it's not, the interchange. Or sorry, the enhancement corridor is not meant to be really, it's not a view corridor as much as it is a. It's, it's more, it's more of a function of, of screening, right? So when we have a development going in, so let's take the development, North Creek, everybody's familiar with that subdivision. That went in, that's right up next to the freeway up there off of ninety-six, you, you enter it from Burnham. But it's between sixteen and Burnham right there, and Cushman Trail runs, you know, just to the east of it. They, right now, you can see those houses from sixteen, and that's because some of the trees that they had in there were diseased, dead, dying. They needed to take them out. Some of the trees that were left over are very thin and actually mostly alders and not very good trees. But there's a planting plan, so they had to put in additional screening as part of the enhancement corridor requirements. So there are a number of trees that they had to plant in there that over time, in, you know, ten, fifteen years, will grow up. And create that screen that we're talking about, and so that's really what the enhancement corridor is, is it's a requirement on the, on private development. To create that screen, right? If that makes sense, I, I don't know if I'm, if I'm helping or if I'm making it more confusing, but that's, that's what we require. So there's additional screening requirements on those, on those developments that within, within the enhancement quarter. That they do not have to implement within the interchange nodes.
Robin, will you go back to the stated goals for me, please?
For this, yeah, go ahead.
Have most of what we've been talking about designate enhancement zones? I almost feel like there's a disconnect between these goals and that map and what we were just.
And that, and that's, yeah, that's my fault, I mean, it really, because it was talking about. Highly visual, a visual, visible. Visually sensitive areas, which, another typo I'm seeing. So where it says designated enhancement zones, the third bullet point down and visually sensitive areas. That triggered to me, you know, show, show the map, I, I would have been probably more effective if I had used the, the GIS. Mapping, but, but that's, so like I said before, these, the, the maps that, that I've included here. Come from our ordinance, come from our design manual, they're not part of the comp plan. Because it referenced it, I thought I would show what we have designated as. You know, the enhancement corridor and visually sensitive areas. It's not, there's, it's not a perfect match, right, I mean, it does talk about. Highway and freeway corridors, but they're also talking about a lot more, like we were saying, Carl was saying, you know, corners within. After you get off, off the highway and you're driving toward downtown or something. You know, the, the prominent corners that you see, that's, that's different than the map that I showed. So I was trying to, trying to support this, but I, I may have just confused it. With showing something that really is limited to just a portion of, of the design standards that, that we already have in place. So, but, but the point that, one of the, the major points is, you know, define terms, I, I totally hear that. And provide graphics to, to show what we're talking about, so we're not just looking at highway sixteen and/or a Starbucks or something, yeah.
Just discussing, kind of boils down to three things, we have view corridors, which are not defined in any of our maps or pictures or anything like that. Like what we're trying to preserve, where we've identified view corridors to be. The enhancement zones or it's basically screening between development and sixteen. Carl shaking his head, he's going kind of, kind of, yes.
Oh, kind of, yeah.
And we have the gateways, basically how people enter the harbor. The, the key commercial areas from sixteen, from license, that's the primary way to get.
Right, or any arterial, right, yeah, yeah. And that, and there is, again, a, a bit of a disconnect here. Right, or any arterial, right? Yeah, yeah. And that, and there is again, a, a bit of a disconnect here, I think, between some of the terminology and the things that are pointed out um, in this community design element. And there will be more as, as we go forward. And it's an imperfect sort of interaction with the design manual, but.
It's imperfect, but it's, it's large. Some of that's because these are our goals and policies, right, within the comp plan. So some of it's been implemented and some of it maybe hasn't been for better, for worse, right? And so the design manual is the best implementation of these goals and policies that we have thus far. And if planning commission has other ideas about what should go into the design manual, it's not currently incorporated or that maybe is captured in our comp plan now that hasn't been implemented yet or put into an implement, implementing document, then we, we should talk about that.
Well, who, who owns the design manual in terms of maintaining it and keeping it up to date and improving it?
We do.
Who's we?
The Community Development Department and the Planning Commission.
I think one thing that we want to try to figure out how to incorporate would be the information that Carl recently provided here about the the implementation of this that requires the developer to put in additional trees, et cetera. You know, every time I drive down 16 and pass that North Creek area, I kind of wince at that sparse screen.
I do too.
Yeah. And I never knew that, uh, we have policies that have been implemented in such a way that, that the developer needed to cure that problem. But I think the comprehensive plan would be a great place to use that as an example. So, you know, this, this policy is implemented in the design manual and it's requires what, however you would say, improvement to the, uh, the, the screening here. And if you drive out 16, you can take a look yourself and think about how good it's going to look in 10 to 15 years. Anyway.
So, so are you advocating for more emphasis then, uh, on, on the enhancement corridor standards or?
I would like to see some examples, this document of how these policies have been implemented. Because I think there's been probably more implementation than most citizens are aware of.
I see.
Based on what you just said, well.
I see.
And I think that's good news and, and, and positive stuff. The more good news you can cram into this plan, the better.
Again, yeah, it is, it is confusing. Um, and when I, when I was talking about sort of how, um, how these two documents relate to each other, it, Carl's right, and, and we have to keep in mind that, that, that the plan is, you know, that the goals and policies, the design manual is the implementation mechanism. I guess my issue, what I was, what I thought I was hearing was, um, that that the terminology doesn't necessarily match, right? That they're, you're looking at one thing in the design manual and, and we should at least, I think, have consistent terminology. If you're going to say visually sensitive areas and then you're going to, you know, implement that through the, the design manual. We should know that we're talking about sort of the same thing. And I think, I think there's, there's a little bit of a disconnect here. We will have, at, at least it's my intention to include a glossary of terms in the comprehensive plan, which we don't currently have. So, so maybe that's an area where we can, you know, have some, have a little bit more consistency.
Uh, Chair, if I could, could I speak to Commissioner Brown's, uh, comment or?
Let me recognize Commissioner Burkhardt first. He's had a standup.
Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, no, go ahead. Go ahead, Carl. I can, I can, I'll piggyback on that.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to note that I, uh, I really appreciate Commissioner Brown's comments about, uh, showing what has worked and what has not worked, uh, well, particularly where the enhancement corridor comes into play because it is something that is is sort of in, in your face, if you will, right? And when you're driving down the road, it's, it can be a real stark contrast. And so I think describing that and explaining that to our residents is really important. I just want, I do want to note though, that in the, in the comp plan, I don't think it's something that we would want to include. We wouldn't want to include examples of that necessarily, I don't think. Um, and, and I then, and I say that because really, uh, as Commissioner Snodgrass said earlier, the comp plan is a forward-looking, uh, document. Uh, so we don't really, we're not really looking backwards, but what we can do is use those examples that Commissioner Brown was talking about to show why we either need to make some changes or beef up the language a bit in the comp plan, or maybe we, or maybe we don't need to because it's, it is, it is working well enough. And I, so I, you know, in, in my notes, I'm writing down, okay, how do we communicate that better to people? Cause I think that is a really really, really poignant point, uh, that, that I think we should, we should really focus on when we're out speaking with the public about these goals and policies and show them that this is what's worked. Here's why it worked. And here's what the requirements are. It is complicated.
Good points.
Commissioner Burkhardt, you're up now.
Oh, thanks. Uh, yeah, just two comments and, and to that end on what has worked, I, I recall, um, there were some multi-family, uh, housing built, um, on the, I guess, the east side of 16, just prior to Olympic. And I remember when it originally went and it was very visible from 16 and and since, uh, I imagine they planted and just overall the vegetation has grown up and you don't really see it at all anymore. So, um, it does work. It just, yeah, it does take a little time. And looking at this overall community design, um, goal and policy, I, it seems like most of the things we're all talking about are already here. Um, I get down to item four there in the clusters of green spaces and, um, that seems contradictory. I don't really understand that deleting green spaces down into several small areas lessens visual impact of required landscape areas. Uh, but then it says develop large areas, uh, to provide impact as opposed to cutting up into smaller areas. Anyway, that, that's a little confusing to me. Uh, and then my, I guess my final point, I'll do three is identify significant views. Um, part of the outreach, I guess, maybe to, uh, query people on what, uh, what they consider significant views and if they have some examples of that. So um, I think that's it for me for now.
Great question.
Robin, could you pull up the, one of the maps that you had, that you had used as an example?
I know it showed a couple of significant views on it, didn't it?
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out. So, uh,
A couple of, I think on the, uh,
Go down to the next one.
Had the.
Yes, of course.
Okay, so see, you can see that arrow up off of the ferry landing. That's the old ferry, ferry landing there. So if we had the map B, it would show a lot more of those and, and those are called significant vistas. We also have another map that shows and it's got some color in it that shows the, uh, the prominent parcels and those significant views on it. And it shows those, those arrows. I think that would be a really interesting exercise, not just for the planning commission, but for the public. It, it may be the, um, divisioning, uh, fair that we're going to have on uh, to ask them that question that Commissioner Burkhardt just, uh, just noted there and see what people think. Are those, are those the significant vistas? Are those the what, what people, what we still want to protect, right? I mean, that's kind of what we're talking about here is if these goals and policies are working for us in the past and are they still relevant going forward?
Absolutely. Okay. Maintain a sense of arrival by preserving a well-defined city edge and by developing gateways into the city and into districts within the city. So building kind of on what we were just talking about, uh, limiting freeway exposure, uh, uh, to select visual nodes, uh, freeway enhancement zones, again, uh, the gateways. Again, what we were just talking about, uh, intersections near freeway off ramps, et cetera. Uh, and then district gateways. Thoughts, inputs?
How about signs telling you that you're entering the city of Gig Harbor and that you're entering the harbor district and some of the other districts of the city? I know Tacoma has signs that talk about the different neighborhoods uh, that you're entering. We have sites telling you to go to, to head down there. We don't have something that says entering harbor district.
Welcome to Gig Harbors.
Yeah, we have Gig Harbor signs at the, at, at the entrance ways, but it, I, I think too, uh, what Commissioner Krosnick is getting at is that we have, and I, we talked about this a little bit with the, uh, during the harbor element is that we've got these, when you're entering the city, there's very distinct differences in those areas. If you're entering in at, uh, Olympic, for instance, it's a totally different feel and vibe there than it is if you're entering at Willatchit, where you're going to get into the historic downtown versus getting into Borgan, where you're going to go to Costco and, and Target, right? So really distinct areas. And I, I think what Commissioner Krosnick is getting at is maybe somehow defining those different areas so that, you know, when, so that it creates that sense of place uh, at that gateway point, which is something that I'm really fond of. I really would like to talk more about. So I think that's super important for Gig Harbor.
Yep. Okay.
Other thoughts on community design?
Moving on. Uh, articulate an architectural style. Now this is talking about, uh, building and structural design. Uh, architectural style reflecting Gig Harbor's built and natural environment, uh, appealing to the human spirit. Uh, small town scale. Small town cityscape, uh, appropriate form for structures.
Hi, either the two of you or any of my other commissioners, could any of you define what you would say Gig Harbor's style or scale or any of that is? Cause I don't think I can.
Then that's, then that would be an interesting question.
But can you point to something that cohesively says that?
Pretty good.
Well, I think it's more, there's a certain style of architecture that you see in a lot of the homes. And I just noticed it's way on, way over today. You know, the second roundabout that's up above now at Rosedale, they put an office building in there that looks like a Pacific Northwest house to make it out. That kind of, that gets back to the, one of the earlier points you were talking about. That's really an important piece of architecture for the city because it makes the roundabout look a lot more appealing than it would with a body shop or a auto repair or auto glass repair place. So, and the maritime part is, you know, it's, it's kind of part of our heritage. That's kind of a maritime, maritime part is kind of small little houses that are tucked along with water that were there, have been there for a lot, a lot of years. They're all being all tricked out now. But those are my two pieces. Just the Northwest and then the maritime field, the architect structure, in my mind.
You also have some larger houses in the downtown area that are kind of designed so that they take advantage of the view across the harbor. And I, I think that's a very nice touch to the downtown waterfront areas as well. Commissioner Burkhardt.
Oh, thank you. Um, I think this came up, uh, last week, our last meeting in the, um, talk of down, down Gig Harbor, wasn't it to define, um, uh, the maritime spirit or what, what have you. But, um, I, I, I guess the only thing I would uh, comment on this is, um, it'd be nice to open up a little more room for, um, innovation, um, or the future, not necessarily, um, I, I don't know. I, I feel like our design manuals is quite prescriptive and in it, I, I would like to see maybe a little bit of loosening for, to allow some kind of evolution, I guess, in design. But that's, that's the modernist in me, I guess.
Or perhaps some experimentation.
Hmm. Interesting.
Yeah, per, perhaps. I mean, I, um, I, I think maintaining scale is important, but, um, you know, the, the, the houses have evolved, you know, you look at some of the, um, original homes down in, in Gig Harbor, they, they, they're quite simple forms where newer homes have a little more articulation and, and things. Um, so, yeah, I, I did, we, we do evolve, don't we?
Well, I would say that those two, I don't know if they're condos, homes, what, that are built right across Donkey Creek from the Harbor History Museum, don't necessarily follow. They definitely have a far more modern Pacific Northwest architectural fields to them. But do we want this to apply just to the harbor or to all of Gig Harbor? Because Point Plastic and the harbor and up, um, Gig Harbor North, these all have very different architectural fields. And do we want to, I mean, how do you write a comprehensive plan where you have almost distinctly defined areas?
They aren't, they aren't defined distinct, yeah.
So we want to fill in kind of within all of those areas. How do we create kind of a cohesive field and still respect the different functions of all of them as areas?
Excellent question. But we do have our districts, right? That neighborhood districts and we're in here is a, a map. And they do have different, um, sort of characteristics and, and pattern of development. But your question about sort of tying that in, um, is a good one.
It's something that, uh, staff has talked about for a long time, uh, in implementing the design manual. You know, our design manual uh, is, it's, it's used sort of as a one size fits all throughout the, throughout the whole harbor, you know, throughout all six and a half square miles of, of Gig Harbor. And then we have some, some other design standards that, that apply in just certain areas. So the enhancement corridor, for instance, um, the historic district is the big one, which then gets into some almost form-based code, you know, it's a little bit, a little bit hybrid, uh, in that way. And so there's, there's been a lot of discussion at the staff level and I would say even at the applicant level about, uh, is, is, is this, um, or is that, is the design manual meant to apply across the entire harbor or was it originally written and were these policies originally written for just the downtown historic district or just the downtown historic area? And so we run into that all the time when we're reviewing plans and we're sometimes trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. We use the design review board a lot in order to try and vary uh, the design manual in order to allow for some of that innovation and the condominiums or the duplex that you brought up. Commissioner Snodgrass, a great example of something that likely went to the design review board and there was a lot of discussion and a lot of, uh, wiggling and, you know, and, uh, figuring out how to make this look like what the applicant wanted rather than what the design manual said it should be and what our comp plan, uh, would have supported.
Right. And go ahead. Sorry. No, you go.
I'm sure you guys read different areas comp plans as well because of what you do. Um, and there's variety in them. Is there value in creating fleshing out more of the districts or the neighborhoods within the, the comp plan? So it's just stated that, you know, this is these feels and we're, we're putting it out there that there are going to be varying standards or expectations based on where some, what neighborhood or district something.
Yes, and, and there is, there is a section, uh, hopefully coming up, um, that, uh, that delineates the districts and does give some, some flavor. Um, I, you know, I didn't, I didn't reprint the, the entire element because I, you know, gave everybody a, a copy and just tried to distill the, the goals. Um, but there is, um, there is more, uh, verbiage and more descriptive language about the districts in the comp plan than. There is more uh verbiage and more descriptive language about the districts in the comp plan than I think I probably um put up on on one of my slides. Um, but again, there's there. There aren't any pictures, right? There aren't any sort of examples of of a look or or something to distinguish. Um, one district from another, but it is a really interesting question. I think when we talk about sense of place. Whether it has whether there is something that ties all of the districts and makes them Gig Harbor. When I think of what we talked uh two weeks ago about Polesbo and certainly, you know, the the downtown. Um, looks very different than, you know, some of the other residential areas. And so is the downtown what makes it, you know, uniquely Polesbo? Or are there themes that that exist throughout the city? I don't know. I haven't explored enough, but that's an interesting question.
Structural standpoint for the comp plan.
Yep.
Is it better to? Kind of put the districts throughout the whole thing, or is it better to have kind of broad things and say? Except where it applies to. You know, the harbor district. And then it directs them to a specific harbor district that has more. Specific design goals. In mind for that pedestrian goals, design goals. Parking or transportation, etc. With that district rather than.
Right. And so, of course, the the harbor being as as prominent and and important to Gig Harbor as it is. Uh, warranted. You know, i- its own element. Um, so. Yeah, uh, so it does have its own sort of standards and design guidelines um in the community design elements. I mean, again, that's a question. Um, whether to, you know. How to feature the other the other districts and and um to talk about them, you're gonna add to that.
Yeah, I was gonna say uh. One, I would say who we should note that the while they created these design districts within. This community design element, they've never been used or implemented in any way. They don't exist in her design manual. They don't exist in our zoning code anywhere. So. So that's that said. Uh. But the other point uh I would say is that what you're, I think, what what you're getting to, I believe, would be that implementation. Phase, right? Where we would talk about what those performance standards would actually be for each of those for each of those districts. Um, and and in the comp plan, we would want to describe those districts. To the fullest extent that we could. This is probably the proper element to do that. And I don't think that we would always, we would want to create a separate element necessarily for each one of them. And and of course. In other elements where it's apropos, we could n- note that, you know, that in this district. This might be a little different. So when you're in the transportation element, for instance, or. So what you're talking about is what you're talking about is really the structure of the entire comp plan and 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 would those design districts then sort of? Be the. The the basis for the comp plan to build from. Right, right. But we're also here just describing. Policies. We're just describing goals. We're describing the policies. Um, and then we do want to get to actions in this comp plan. That's something that the consultants talked a lot about, and a lot of comp plans do have actions and things that are measurable. But we also want to remember that this is concept, this plan is conceptual. It's looking forward, but it's conceptual. It doesn't get in. Our comp plan gets into the the nuts and bolts a bit more than than I think it should. Uh, especially in 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 this element, because really some of this stuff is almost getting into code, you know, almost it's almost prescribing. What what will happen in this area rather than generally saying this is what we want this area to look like, but we want it to feel like. Those sorts of things, so.
Yeah, it it. Sure.
Absolutely.
Sure, absolutely. What? Yeah, wha- what works, what doesn't, what what do you love, what do you not love? Those questions, yeah, covering pretty much all of the elements, but design, character, sense of place is pretty fundamental. Um, I think to most people's experience um of of Gig Harbor. Uh, I'm going to keep moving on because we still have kind of a lot to cover, so I might have to speed up a little bit. Um, encourage building designs which define and respect the human scale. Um. Defining floor levels. It's sort of interesting what they pulled out and what they didn't, but. Um, defining floor levels and encouraging mixed use structures, and they go into why. Why those are are good things. Um. Kind of straightforward. Unless somebody. Puts up their hand, I'm gonna keep moving. Is that okay? Let me know. All right. Uh, develop a hierarchy in building and site design. Primary structures as focal points. Um. Yeah.
Could I could we back up?
What's that?
Could we back up one?
We could.
Could we? I just want to ask a quick question. I'm sorry. I want I wanted to go back. What 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 does the planning? How does the planning commission feel about mixed use development?
Hmm.
I know you've seen it uh in other cities, Seattle. I'm thinking some some of the bigger cities, but there's a very distinct. Look, I think uh in this modern age of what um sort of a five over one or a three over one looks like in the cities. You have. Your residential on the ground floor and then, I'm sorry, your commercial on the ground floor and your residential above. Is that Gig Harbor? Does that fit into? Does that fit into Gig Harbor? Is there any place for it here?
Good question.
My sense is it's probably too late. I know the kinds of developments you're talking about. I know the kinds of developments you're talking about. I I have the sense it might be too late here. Um, because of our major developments, Point Fosdick and out in the burn. Uh, and and I don't know where you would put effectively any kind of a mixed use development in that area. One that would encourage both commercial and residential. Just kind of overall.
Um, I think it's uh is a good idea. Where we could put it in, I think of a place up by the post office. That would scream to me um mixed use development would make a lot of sense there. Maybe not five to one, maybe two or three to one. Um. And I think what's coming anyway, whether we like it or not. It's going to be more density. Throughout our community if the state puts its uh, you know, lowers its limitations next time around or time after that. So um. I I'm not opposed to it where it could be worked. I I don't think we can hang our heads forever on the old maritime village theme. Uh, because, you know, many people that live here now. Did not grow up in that era. They're they're transplants like myself and others. Um, and that really limits you in terms of um. Doing doing new things. You have to stay in the old. Old frame of mind. So I'm I'm open to the idea actually of mixed use and. I think you can. I think they started to do a little bit of that with the. You know, the development so close to like the target areas and up there, home people, they've got. It's not. Mixed use per se, but it's it's right next to commercial. It's residential, it's right next to commercial.
You have a little bit of that over by Harbor Greens.
Yeah.
All right.
You have some.
That's right.
You have some uh shops on the bottom.
condos or whatever. Yeah, yeah.
Houses on the top.
Yep.
Commissioner Burkhardt.
Uh, yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, I would agree with Commissioners Holtis. It it's um. I I I would, I think we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to restrict ourselves from it just uh due to the fact, you know, I mean, the density and and keep that option open. I think it could work work well and. In a lot of different places, maybe not to the scale of five over one, but uh definitely one or two in in spots and um. And and hopefully, you know, even smaller um. Footprints um of a mixed use uh type um. Place.
I think it's a matter of finding mixed use because mixed use can be a single retail place with one or two apartments above. I actually. I think what was pointed out about the Gig Harbor North area. Is actually a sense of mixed use because of. Proximity, but it's not the traditional three or five over one. Um. I think we. Missed out on an opportunity. Not that I'm sure that opportunity was there, like developers were there offering it, but with the redevelopment of the old Fred Meyer. Building would have. Made a good retail lower level, a couple of levels above of residential close to sixteen. In Gig Harbor, since we are fairly developed around and we have limited trans transit. Those are going to be defining things and how we define mixed use development. Because. As we are forced to look at density and all of that. Access to transit. Parking in a. Adding traditional parking um requirements. To some of those, those are going to be difficult things here. So I think the harbor is going to have a wider variety of mixed uses.
Redefining mixed use.
I I. I think Bob read my mind. I agree completely with his comments. And I also think that we ought to be thinking in terms of mixed use development in some of the annexation areas, UGAs. Where they'll need uh. Commercial space, uh both for shopping and for professional offices. And built certainly, and we we certainly need a more affordable housing in town, and that's one way to go get it. So I think that's an important part of the comp plan and should stay in there.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, develop a hierarchy in building and site design. Uh, we uh touched on this. Um, some examples of. Um, things uh reforms, colonnades, again, design elements, um creating uh focal points. Uh, comments on the. Hierarchy in building and site design. No.
Well, I'm trying to think of the focal point for the Olympic Village and Galaxy Theater step jumps out to my mind. It's like the only one that's got a big. Dynamic view. Is that what it's supposed to be? Is that like the hierarchy? That's the most important focal point and everything else is like lower level?
I don't think that was the intent.
It's actually the uh the the. The main building of that site is the uh the the medical building at the other end of the. Of the side over by the, what's the mar- is it Marshall's? Not. The multi-care building. Yeah, that's actually the the main the main building. So in in hierarchy. All of the other buildings were supposed to sort of.
Be subordinate.
Yeah, mimic that in some way. Color, architectural design. Do you think it got there?
Duly noted.
Think it's noble. It's a noble thought, but I don't see it. Um, as as dramatic as that, that hierarchy really is not as dramatic in my mind as I think that talks about.
Given the age of these, I'm not sure the implementation of that has has really fleshed out that goal. When I was reading through, I didn't. Fully understand most of the wording about secondary structures. I'm not sure those were worded. Yeah, I believe well.
Uh, integrate secondary structures as support buildings. I I think it's, yeah. I don't know that. That they necessarily that the intent was to have them support the primary. Structure, but just again, be subordinate in terms of of design have. It's like it's like an anchor, right? In a in a shopping center. So that's sort of the draw. That's the focus. And everything else is kind of subordinate or or supports that somehow. I think that's the idea in in the uh in a design context. Um, I don't know where we've been. Super successful at that, but.
Yeah, I think, you know, again, this comes back to oftentimes. Where where the design doesn't work the way our design manual currently. How our design manual currently works is it allows you to go to the DRB. And as long as it's meeting, as long as an alternative design is meeting the intent. Of those provisions within the design manual. And we can make a finding that it did or does. Uh, then they're allowed to uh vary in some ways. And so I think we've seen a lot of that throughout the years. Um. And. I'm not entirely certain myself if the design manual's intent. Has been met overall. Now, again. What is the intent of the design manual? Was it meant to be applied across? Citywide? Uh, or was it really meant to just apply? To the downtown business district because we do run up against that very often where it's just. The design mail just won't work in that sense. Now, when we talk about hierarchy and design. We could certainly do a better job, I think, overall. There will, you will, if you look closely and study the design manual, you'll definitely see elements. From that main building throughout the secondary buildings on that site. They do, they do exist, but they're. Minute. In so in a lot of ways.
More subtle.
Very subtle.
Okay. Uh. So um, so that's, and I apologize, I couldn't uh blow this up. I I probably should have chopped it in half or something, but. Um, but this is uh the design areas map. Um, and I will so that the um. Element goes through um the. Specific neighborhoods, but I wanted you to at least sort of see. Um, I can. Yeah, I should have. I should have blown that up. Sorry, that's kind of hard to read. Um, but we'll go through the the individual. Uh, districts, and then uh if you if you want to go back and and try to uh look for reference here, you probably know these uh. Um, I've I've had to learn them, so um. Uh, define neighborhood design areas. Um, and so. The first two policies we're just talking about. Um, again, what we've discussed, the design standards recognizing uh neighborhood characteristics. Uh, enhance and be compatible with existing neighborhood characteristics. It's kind of says the same thing. Um, so then that goes into the design areas, uh the view basin. Um. Heritage mix, I don't know. I'm not sure why they don't call it the harbor, but whatever. That's just me. Uh, city's heritage, right? Mix of retail. Um, this would incorporate obviously the waterfront, uh the harbor area. Um. And then um. Soundview, and then just stop if you want to talk about any of these specifically. I'm just going to kind of tick them off, and it goes on to the next slide. Um, sound, but you can see that it sort of does describe. Um. You know, the themes, I guess, that are that are associated with each of uh the design areas. Soundview um that incorporates Kimball and Read Drive. Uh, gateway. To the historic Gig Harbor. Um, and does provide some of the some of the best views, I have to say. Um. And then it describes what the development is characterized, some multifamily, single family, um low intensity commercial. Gig Harbor North, again, we've talked about it, regional services uh uh characterized the design contemporary architecture. And uh connections, retention of large natural areas. Um. It says here, I like this part, but it's it's curious, considerable available lands, allowing the area to expand, office, industrial, medical, retain uh retain retail, I'm sorry. And residential uses. Um. I don't know if we need to uh update that or not. Um, the other design areas include uh Peacock Hill. Suburban density, uh Rosedale Hunt, uh commercial and residential. Um, lower intensity, commercial, industrial, uh west side. And again, you you folks know these areas. Um, I don't need to necessarily go through them. Uh, Buschich Northwest Industrial. Uh, considered uh employment district. Public institutional um. Development uh and Purdy is sort of a strange outlier because uh Purdy is not in the city. Um, but there it is. Um. Any discussion? Do you want me to go back and look at any of the sort of little blurbs uh that the element uh includes for each of these uh? Uh, neighborhood design areas? Let me know.
Can I pack up? Carl said something earlier that these were in the comp plan, but they weren't really. Used other than this. This description right here. Is that, did I get that right, Carl?
That's that's correct, Commissioner Salters.
So why why is this here if it's not really on? Part of uh. It's not incorporated in the planning.
There was some intent uh at the time that they developed these. Um, and I think these these came in in our last overhaul of the comp plan, last update and in twenty fourteen. Uh, and I think the idea was that they were thinking um about what we've been discussing, and that is that there are Gig Harbors. Changing in such a way that it. Isn't. Just. The small fishing village that is represented in the downtown core. The small fishing village that is represented in the downtown core anymore, right? It's got the west side. It has Purdy. It has the northwest industrial area over where. Latitude forty-seven was built and the women's prison exists and we have schools over there. So there, you know, it's, it, they were, they were think, we were contemplating that at the time. Now, we didn't use it in any way. We didn't implement it, but we laid the groundwork for what could be a form-based code. Um, if the city wanted to move in that direction, that's a big, that's a sea change from where we're at right now, right? Although, no, I shouldn't say that. We're a little bit of a hybrid because of the design manual, but. Um, but there's opportunity because this is already in the comp plan. There's opportunity for the city to utilize these business, these districts, these design districts in such a way. To get to some of the points that you all have already. Brought up, which is impressive. Um, so, uh, you know, that, that, I'll, I'll leave it there. Uh, hopefully that helps a little bit.
Right. And again, I did, I did, you know, uh, abbreviate, um, some of, uh, some of the pieces here. Um, I will say that, that the element does talk about the purpose. Um, it just didn't seem to go anywhere with it, or we didn't sort of expand on it, but. Uh, neighborhood design areas are identified to serve as a basis for establishing or accommodating detailed design standards. Um, we didn't develop that any further, right? So, so that's, I think, what Carl was just talking about. The intent was, um, to move forward. Um, and we just haven't gotten there. So I guess the question is, is, should we do that? Is that, uh, is that still, uh, an important, um, uh, goal, um, to, to keep?
Just about to ask, like, how does that process happen? Because if we say. One of my favorites was, I think it's called the west side on there. You get three quarters of the way through the blur before you get to heavy traffic.
Yeah.
That is where all of our, uh, grocery stores and when that, like, a fair amount of. Local serving rather than the regional serving services are, a lot of medical, a lot of that stuff is there. Um, so are we in these neighborhood things looking to? Define, we want more concentration of these things here? Are we, because are we?
I, I think it's mostly characterizing what is there. It leaves open the question, right? If, if.
But it seems like that would be a big part of the comp plan. Do we flesh these out and we create more? Or how do we want to? Okay, so we've got the one thing with heavy traffic. Should be something of, how are we, how do we want to try to mitigate that? Or address that going forward because it's a forward-looking document. Um. Purdy, Purdy, it's, it's a northern, you could think that, I don't know, is that western, northern? I get confused with that. Um. Gateway.
Northern. Northern.
Thank you. That's what I would call it. Um. Gateway, the harbor, you know, and from the Cape Peninsula and all that. It's also one of the areas people seem to talk about a lot of U G A. And could be future development, all that. So we wanted to find here within the comp plan. How we want that to develop, given that we have a bridge that is precarious. It's just a matter of time before that thing has to be redone and flooding that happens, right? It's pretty, so how do we want to? Address development there, given those things. Um, you know, and, and. What I call Gig Harbor North. Um. I don't see it there. I think so on the slide. Um. Do we further develop for retail or regional draw? Do we, do we concentrate those things or do we try and spread them out? I mean, it seems like that's. Part of what we're doing here.
Those are the questions. Those are the questions. Exactly. Not descriptions necessarily. Go for it.
And I would note that, uh, you know, this, if this is something that the planning commission is interested in studying further. You know, the, the way to go about this, I think what I would recommend or suggest is that we would want another. We would want to bring this back for its own meeting probably and have some discussion about each of these areas. Distinct areas, because, you know, we could talk about them here, but I think the idea behind that. If, if this is something the planning commission is interested in, is we would, we, we need to flesh out. Do, first of all, do these boundaries still exist and do they make sense, I think? Uh, and then secondarily, what, what should those areas look like? You know, what, what, what are their purposes? Uh, and, and then, of course, we need to get the residents to weigh in on that, you know? Uh, and find out what, what people who live in these areas think about them. What do the businesses think about them? We need to invite folks in to, to talk about it too. Because like I said, I mean, if, if that's the direction that we go and we wanted to. Flesh this out further, these design areas. I mean, we're talking about. Major changes to the design manual to implement what that might look like. Um, I, I don't personally think it's a bad idea, uh, but. Um, that's of course up to planning commissions, up to council, it's up to the, the residents to, to, to decide if that makes sense. And again, it's getting away from that idea that we are. Just that fishing village around the harbor and we're, we're more, you know, we're, we're sort of more than that now.
Mr. Salters, Commissioner Burkhardt.
I think that's a good suggestion, Carl. Um, you know, I, I mean, I asked why we're talking about this because we didn't do anything with it. Since twenty fourteen, but Gig Harbor has changed a lot since twenty fourteen. And one of my just generic comments is what I've seen of the comp plan so far, it's very harbor centric. It's, and it's almost like it's two different worlds we're living here. And one is the harbor and everything else gets sort of shuffled into the. And then there's the rest of Gig Harbor. And since I live in one of the other areas of Gig Harbor. Uh, I think maybe it makes sense to really think about how it's a plan. Doing sort of a, uh, rea- realignment. To re- kind of reflect that it's much bigger city. There's seven or eight major areas and. A lot of us go to those places to do our daily life. They don't go to the hardware. And the other part, so they're part of our, are more part of our life perhaps than the harvest. This is my comment. I, I would, I would agree with having such a session, the rest of the commissioners did.
Yeah, I would, I would just piggyback on all those comments. I mean, it seems like more kind of clearly defining these areas. Um, uh, would be, is kind of central to the completion of the, of the comp plan. Um, I think it would be hard to just ignore, uh, these definitions and, and, and complete it without. Um, a better, a better look at, um. At where we are with this, because it, um, yeah, it isn't just the, just the harbor centric.
One thing I, I noticed here in Gig Harbor North, uh, regional service area. You do have a large parcel in there that's waiting to be developed. As a shopping area, and I know that's been kind of an on and off thing. For a number of years now, but that might very well be your largest, uh, uh, potential commercial center that's left in the city to be developed. That's another point. Yes, that could be a really good opportunity to bring in some mixed uses.
Well, I'd like to say that I agree with, uh. Your suggestion, Carl, and, and Bob's comments as well. And I think that, uh, that there, there is a real issue about the comp plan being harbor centric. And, and we ought to address that because most of the population isn't. In the, in the view basin or however you describe it. Um, the other thing I would say is that this might be a good section. In which to insert a new policy, which is to keep the design manual updated to reflect all of the, the needs of all of the neighborhoods in Gig Harbor. And I, I think that would be, maybe that even should be a goal. I don't know, but it, it certainly sounds like that's something that needs some attention.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Leonard. Uh, let's see, we just continued, uh, maintain and incorporate Gig Harbor's natural conditions in new residential developments. Um, this is, uh, incorporating vegetation, trees. Um. Buffers, things that, uh, exist, uh, in our ordinances now. Uh, landscape buffers between developments and perimeter roads. Again, we have a lot of this, um, open space. Um, and respecting existing topography. Um, yeah, I, I, I personally don't, I don't see anything here that does not exist, um, in our ordinance. Um. And is, and is applied, um, to, to all developments and in, in all districts, so. Um, many comments.
I wonder if this would be an appropriate place to, uh, put in a new section. And that would be to encourage, I, I think I wrote something down here. Let's see if that's still pertinent or not. Uh, encourage strong neighborhoods, uh, or encourage designs which. Support strong neighborhoods where neighbors look out for each other. I think that's a really important piece in the time that we live in right now, as we tend to become more and more isolated. And I'd like to see that as part of the design of a neighborhood that where. We get to know our neighbors and we get to understand that, you know, we don't, we're not out walking the dog for a few days. That's cause for concern. That sort of thing.
Or cul-de-sacs. I think to a greater extent than exists for me, the, the view basin, the people up at Harbor Hill feel like they have that.
Yes, I think you're absolutely right there. Harbor Hills, neighborhood barbecues on holidays and things like that, which I think is really deserved.
Hmm.
And one other thing here that we might include is to encourage the formation of homeowner associations. Because I think that is a vehicle whereby homeowners are taking care of the neighborhood.
Okay.
I like the concept. You're kind of getting into social engineering here and I don't know. That's really a comp plan.
Well, that's why I want to tie it to design.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, I guess what, I mean, would there be room of, yeah, for the encouragement and neighborhood groups? I know, you know, like Seattle has a lot of neighborhood groups. Um, I, I don't know where that would fit in.
That, that's, that's another way to do it. It's just some sort of civil organization, but I think what Commissioner Steingrass mentioned about. The, the socialization that occurs in, uh, Harbor Hill, I think is also a factor of the way that community is designed.
It, right. I, I was gonna say, and, and we have, you know, um, elements that, um, you know, require. Garages to be behind the house, front porches, things that, you know, where you actually see each other if you're, if you're walking down the street. Um, to the extent people use those things. So design, design can be a vehicle, um, to make everyone a bit more visible, uh, to one another. Um, yeah. Okay.
I think those are excellent, excellent ideas, uh, and certainly those are, I think, I think those are, uh. I'm, I'm, I'm hung up on the homeowners association one just a little bit, but I think those, those are, uh, good. Um, ideas for goals and policies. I think they do fit into the comp plan. So I, I think that is something that could be. That could be implemented in here for sure. We do require homeowners associations for new subdivisions. We require that they record C C N Rs. After that, once that's done, uh, we don't require that a neighborhood maintain. Their C C N Rs or that they maintain their neighborhood association. They can disband them and they're, they, they wouldn't be out of step with. City code and, and that, in that way. So, so encourage would be probably the, the right terminology here.
And it would, if you had the design of the neighborhoods done so that the flow of people like John said. Was more not just from your driveway to your garage and then you're done. But, but they're moving around, the walking around the neighborhood and. Um, that's, that's something that you probably could encourage with the designs, some design.
Oh, absolutely. Right.
Now lead your, what you're looking to get.
Yeah, walkability, um, yeah, common areas, those kinds of things where people can gather. Um, yeah, there are a whole slew of, of design elements that, um, that can encourage folks to. Uh, get out of their houses and, and see their neighbors.
How does the planning commission feel about, uh, commercial nodes in residential subdivisions? The idea of the old, the old, the old idea of the corner store that's long gone in America.
I think if we want to cut down on traffic, they're kind of, it, it could, it could be a big, uh, benefit.
Uh, scale, cost of opening a place when you start thinking about corner stores. Becomes difficult, but what I was actually going to say was. It's not quite the corner store concept, but it works in Harbor Hill. It was, the sidewalks are placed, you know, they're, they're wide. They, they neck those neighborhoods very well to each other and to. The. The retail development that is there. Some of that retail development doesn't actually face the road all that well. Um. Where in, we have to do it in, in a session where we're looking at each of those neighborhoods. If and where does that smaller scale development work in that neighborhood and to what extent could it attract? Um, but yes, I. I want to be had that.
You've got kind of a weird situation that occurs in the, I think it's the McCormick Creek development. Where you've got people who pretty much have Costco and some of those other stores in their backyard and they can't get there. Because there's this, there's a forest and a, and a hill, you know, there's no like sidewalk that would allow someone to go up there. And I know Costco is probably not the place where you go to buy a carton of milk, but, uh, uh, it does seem kind of weird to me.
Lack of, of connectivity there. Yep.
So would you advocate for more through roads and less, less cul-de-sacs?
So that's a good question. Is there a pluses and minus to, to both, Carl? Um, maybe it's just a matter of having pedestrian access in some of those cases. I know the people in that neighborhood wanted, uh, there was supposed to be a road connecting to, uh. I can't think of the name of that other one. It was supposed to go through and the neighbors fought that, which I thought was because they were afraid of. Traffic running over their kids. And I think they actually created the opposite situation.
Hmm.
That there's going to be more traffic down at the end of that road. Uh, that's going to affect the children who are, especially with ball fields there. Uh, I, I think it was a very short sighted decision.
Hmm, interesting.
Whatever.
I think Bob has something. Um, regarding your question, Carl, about small little stores and residential areas. I'm kind of concerned there's a slippery slope that the city is starting to do in terms of the residential areas. You know, the home businesses is one thing. And to bring up a favorite topic, now we're, we're having other, um. Perhaps not purely commercial, but there's other, uh, business activities that are going in this neighborhood now as well. So I, I just get a little worried that where does the line between residential and commercial finally get drawn? Maybe, maybe there's a planner's term that says X percent of a neighborhood is, it's residential till you reach nine, eighty or seventy or something like that.
Sorry, kind of, if there is an easy way to pour it to. Check out the difference between like form-based code and, and those and how they impact. What Commissioner Salters is talking about.
Or is that a question? I'm sorry. It was hard to hear.
Cause I didn't know how to word it very well. Um. I was wondering if, if a brief, if there's even a possibility of a brief discussion about form-based code versus.
Euclidean zoning.
Um, and how that impacts what he's talking about.
Well, I think it is worthwhile because we're, we are, we are off on this, this topic, right? Talking about the, the, the neighborhood design districts for one. Um, and, you know, and I think, you know, this is a really interesting conversation and I think. Uh, going back to the beginning of it and talking about, uh, just neighborhood design in general. You know, we have standards within the design manual for how. You know, we have standards within the design manual for how neighborhoods should develop, sort of, right? But they're not that prescriptive. So if you take, for instance, Harbor Hill and how it developed and how it was designed, it was done through a planned residential development. So that allowed for a lot of flexibility. And so we had code within the zoning code that would allow for it to do different things than what other neighborhoods might've been able to do. And I think of, uh, Harbor Crossing is another one that's got, you know, a lot of different, that's up behind Target. You know, a lot of houses packed into that place, but the way they did it was thoughtful, you know, it's very, it's different. It's very interesting. And if you like that kind of living, then it's, it's great, you know? So, so that's one thing. We could talk about more prescriptive code for neighborhood design specifically. And that's something that would be implemented then through, of course, the design manual, or maybe it's through, or maybe it's by zone. Or as Commissioner Snodgrass is getting to, could be done through something like form-based codes, which cares less about what the use is, what the use is and more about what it ends up looking like. So if you've got a, a commercial area that you want to be more commercial, then you're going to create design standards that would invite a more commercially pleasing area. And you'd end up with some mixed use and things like that, because there's going to be some innovative developers that are going to find ways to maybe sneak some residential in there, even though the codes, the design codes that, uh, would prescribe what it should look like, might not lend themselves to residential as much as they do commercial. But to Commissioner Soltes's point about, or question about percentages for how much residential we have in one area versus another. I, I don't know that there is any, anything like that, that I'm really aware of to say, I, it's going to be a residential area, it has to have seventy percent residential. That's something we could prescribe for sure. But a form-based code would sort of allow it to happen itself organically.
Market forces, all the rest.
It adds, it, it offers a lot of flexibility. So you could get, I suppose you get less of that draw, you get less of a line drawn, if that's what you're looking for of seventy percent residential. And then we get to commercial, this area residential, this area commercial, that's what we do now, right? With zoning. Although to your point, we do allow home-based businesses within our residential zones. We allow short-term rentals within our residential zones. And we allow some other businesses, if you want to call them that, within residential zones, like assisted living and things like that, right? So, so that line is blurred, sort of, in that way. And if we wanted to keep it as prescriptive as that and say, this is residential and this is commercial, then what we're doing is right. If we want to start blurring those lines more than form-based code is, is, is the direction to go. And a lot of places are going to that, right? That's, that is, that is where zoning is, is heading in in the United States for sure.
Yeah, for, and for a lot of reasons, right? The way people live and shop and, and you know, go about their, their daily lives is different. And we're thinking about how to get out of our cars a little bit more, um, in terms of climate change and, and sustainability. You know, it might make sense as I think, uh, one of the commissioners brought up to have a store that you can walk to instead of having to get into your car, right? Okay, I'm moving on.
Well.
Oh, sorry.
Carl, what would be the benefit of the commercial activity within a residential neighborhood, for example?
I, I think Robin just touched on it, uh, and that is, uh, getting people out of their cars, right? So if you have it, that's one, that's one. The other one is, uh, some, what the other commissioners were talking about, Commissioner Krasnick was bringing up, and that is knowing you're getting to know your neighbors. So it creates nodes within your neighborhoods. Right now we have in Harbor Hills, a good example where you have some places where people can, you know, will gather at the bocce ball courts or the barbecue pits, or they've got, you know, a little amphitheater kind of a thing there. And, and I don't know how much of all, how much all of that is used. I think in Harbor Hill is a bit of an anomaly and that it's, a lot of that stuff is used a lot. But I see in a lot of neighborhoods where they put a tot lot in or something like that, or they put in a little open field or, you know, something where people are hope, hope, they're hoping folks will gather. They don't oftentimes, right? They, they just don't. And I've seen it in hundreds of developments that where it just doesn't get used and that playground equipment just rusts and falls apart and looks crummy after a while. If you have a store or a post office or a place where people normally go and run into each other, that's how you get to know people, right? You get to know people at the coffee shop. Get to know people at the grocery store, get to know people at a post office type of a thing. That's, that, those are what we, in planning, what you call a node. And we've, we don't, we don't really have those anymore, you know? We don't have the grid-like development that we used to, that we used to do. It's all cul-de-sacs and individual neighborhoods that are sort of cordoned off from each other and not a lot of connectivity. And you have to get in your car to get out and, and get other places. And even within your neighborhood, people get in their car and go to another house across the neighborhood oftentimes, right? So that, that's the, to me, that's the major benefit is the social aspect. But there's of course the environmental aspect as well, that that's what Robin was talking about. There's a huge environmental benefit to having commercial areas mixed in with residential and, and the form-based code is, is, is meant to encourage that kind of thing, even creating, you know, you could even look at block development where you have, you know, we think of mixed use in the sense of residential on the ground floor, commercial, we think of it vertical, but mixed use can also mean residential and then a commercial and a residential commercial all within a block, right? And you can even have a school there where you could have a, a public amenity like a, an aqua, you know, an aquatic center or, you know, recreational aspects to it too, but all within this little area where you don't really have to get in your car unless maybe you have to go to work and then maybe you catch the bus.
Just one comment then. I think the market is going to speak in, in terms of commercial development. If, if you look at Peninsula right now, I think it's shouting at us that we're never going to see another hardware store, another grocery store, and, uh, another, uh, pharmacy there because people are getting their, their drugs and their hardware and whatever else they need at Uptown or, or at Freddy's.
Or Amazon.
I, you know, I, I kind of shudder at the idea of us spending time in community planning. Uh, try to persuade people not to get into their cars. My wife came home today with five bags of groceries and a couple of gallons of distilled water and stuff. There's got to be a car involved, un- unless we get it delivered. So anyway, I, I, I guess my, my point is, I think we have to be really careful about, uh, blurring the line and encouraging, uh, for commercial activity and, and residential developments. I, I, I don't know that there's evidence that that's going to be successful. And I'm, and I'm not sure it's, it's needed.
I would actually argue that redevelopment becomes easier when you have a closer population base to that retail. Like had the old Fred Meyer building, granted that building has some issues. But there's a big arterial that separates it from housing over here and it's commercial and it's sixteen. If you have an area where you had apartments above or apartments, you know, an apartment building walking distance over here, it becomes much more attractive to any company to redevelop that area because they know they have a built-in customer base. So form-based code allows a little bit more flexibility in those things.
Right. And so maybe instead of thinking of it as, as what we would be encouraging or, or, you know, forcing, just maybe getting out of the way and, and, and letting, um, letting that sort of organic market, whatever it is, um, the economic market, not the corner market. Creating the, the, the forms or, or setting up the parameters for the forms and, and whatever makes sense, um, will, will develop on its own. More than prescribing what goes where.
Robin, if you had a, a description of form-based code and the benefits thereof that you could find and send out to us, I'd be grateful to see that.
You got it.
Commissioner George?
Oh, hey, thank you. Great conversation. Sorry to interrupt. It's really interesting, this whole concept, social engineering. I'm a little bit under the weather, so I'm gonna, I just want to let folks know and apologies for interrupting you and I'm gonna sign off. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Chair, could I also note, um, if, if commissioners could turn their microphones off when they're not using them, that would be good because the, um, the, the cameras in here actually follow the microphones when they're turned on.
Okay. Let's see. Again, try to, we're probably not going to get through all of this, so we, we may have to pick this up next time, but I, I don't want to cut any of the discussion short. So, um, we'll keep moving through, uh, ensure new residential developments, uh, provide an interface between public and private activities. Uh, examples of the different policies. Again, what we've been talking about pedestrian, uh, non-vehicle connections, uh, connections between neighborhood, uh, developments. Appropriate number of visitor parking spaces in residential developments. That's an interesting one. And then alternatives to on-street parking. Comments? Okay. Feel free, but if not, I will move on. Okay. Uh, and again, this is all, uh, in, um, under the, the auspices of residential development design, sort of the subheading up there. Homes and residential developments should be designed to enhance existing characteristics of Gig Harbor. We've sort of seen this and talked about this in different ways. Uh, this is about the size of new residences and remodels, uh, being proportioned to, um, uh, the lot size. And the existing neighborhood. So this is neighborhood compatibility. With increased density, uh, additional consideration to lot orientation, building orientation, yard sizes, varied lot configurations, anything there, um, trigger comments or questions?
Okay, I've got a question if I could ask, maybe this will spur some conversation. In terms of lot sizes, what, what is the planning commission's feeling on larger lots versus smaller lots? When we're talking about, let's say, new subdivision, or maybe if we're talking about um, existing large lots uh, that are ripe for redevelopment, maybe a large lot with a single home on it that is falling down. Would that be better served with two lots or should we keep the same large lot? And then in the same vein, when we're talking about new subdivisions, do we like larger lots versus smaller lots?
A general comment here that says here, existing characteristics of Gig Harbor. That kind of dovetails back to our various neighborhoods. We want residential developments to reflect the characteristics of the neighborhood that it's in. Uh, I think most people today, uh, do still prefer larger lots. But development is being driven towards smaller lots and, and two-story homes. So I, I think that might be almost a, a question that has more bearing on the dynamics of the neighborhood than on preferences. Where, where you've got a development that's going to expand on an existing subdivision and they've got quarter acre lots. Uh, you probably want quarter acre lots, uh, rather than tenth acre lots. Those, those are the kinds of questions that come out of the development based on neighborhood characteristics.
I would, oh, I apologize. No, no, I'm sorry. It would depend, we talked about this somewhat with the urban tree canopy discussion. It depends largely on the overall design. If they're saving a, a larger area, they're creating both that, that interaction space and leaving a larger swath of, of natural vegetation, those kinds of things. Smaller lots still fit within a design theme and it, it creates the living, the lifestyle, the interaction that people want, if they have that outdoor space that they're actually going to use. Um, and it creates the interaction that we're all talking about, that, that feeling of community. Whereas if you just have tiny lots and it says, well, that just means we can fit more houses, then you're not accomplishing that, that goal. And it I lose my train of thought a lot anymore. I apologize. So.
Oh, just to kind of pick up on that a little bit. I, I, um, if it's a new neighborhood, I'm, I'm fine with, you know, much smaller lot sizes. That's sort of a, that becomes a choice of whoever wants to buy into that neighborhood. They know what they're getting into. Where I have a little concern is an existing neighborhood that has, I'd say a bunch of big lots in it. And then somebody says, well, you know, I, I could take down this old house and put in two or three other smaller houses. I think that changes the character of the neighborhood dramatically if that is a lot, which may be forced on us downstream, but for now, uh, I, I would sort of say whatever was initially laid out is, should probably be kind of maintained. Anything that's new, uh, you know, bring it on because we, we do need to get more dense, density. But you're not changing the, the rules of the game halfway through.
Well, it actually piggybacks on what Commissioner Soltes has said, and I'm sure you guys are sort of aware of what's happening primarily on the east side of Tacoma. Where they are allowing higher density on single-family lots. And it's, they will put four units on a typical normal-sized single-family lot and it looks like Soviet housing. Well, it, you know, that era. It's not attractive. It does not fit with the character of, of any part of the harbor that I'm aware of. But I assume that would be caught in a design board kind of. Meaning, I hope. But form-based code and, and related to what he was saying, you know, I think we want kind of the option of having something that's happening, what did you call it that's behind Target? I view it all as Harbor Hill.
Crossing.
There are sections there where it's like townhomes. Almost there. And then regular single-family homes and, you know, then you get up to Bracera where you have apartments and it, it all blends with these different types of density and we're going to have to address that in the harbor. And I think that's a much more harbor-style way of addressing that. And so saying lots have to be this size takes away some of that flexibility.
Isn't this going to be forced upon us by the legislature?
It's likely at some point. We dodged, we dodged this, this last, uh, piece of legislation because of our size and the fact that we're not, our UGA is not connected to Tacoma. But, um, I think unless there's, uh, some, you know, massive, uh, home building activity, uh, throughout the state that, um, that we're, we're probably going to see this again and, and probably have to deal with it ourselves. Um, and when we talk, when we talk about, uh, middle housing, because we do, we do have to speak to it in, in the comp plan. To, to some extent, um, it will be, um, it will be about design because, uh, and Carl and I and, and perhaps some of the commissioners have seen, you know, a duplex or triplex that looks exactly like a single-family dwelling from the outside. It really is about design. Density is often about design. And when it looks like Soviet-era housing or Section Eight housing or whatever, um, then that's, you know, somebody didn't pay attention to, to, uh, to design. So, um, we can address that.
Commissioner Berger.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I would just reiterate that, um, yeah, I don't think one size fits all. It, um, you know, back to our discussion on the different neighborhoods, that would definitely, I think, be the, uh, the context that we would want to look at, um, you know, varying lot sizes depending on the, uh, neighborhood condition or the, um, form desired. Thanks.
Sounds good. Okay. Uh, this is a short one. Promote sustainable residential developments. Encourage development, uh, building practices in the construction of new residential developments. I don't think anybody would necessarily disagree with that, but if anybody has any comments with, and, but we've talked about this before, but we, at some point, will, you know, be looking more at sustainability in conjunction with climate. And so, so to some extent, we will be talking about this quite a bit in the future, but.
Commissioner Burkhar.
Yeah, just, I would just add to this, all, all rush should face south for solar panels.
Actually, you raised a very interesting point there, because I'm wondering, is there going to be a point in time when solar panels are going to be required? That's number one, and number two, a connection in the garage or on the outside of the house that's going to allow you to charge an electric car?
Yeah, it's, it's coming, I think that's another, another piece that is probably coming, we're not quite there. I will say, in, in Santa Cruz, for new developments, the orientation of, of new, new the building envelope for, for new houses is, is in, in the code that, to make the best use of Southwest, and so, anyway, I haven't seen that appear, but yeah, I mean, it's part of sustainability. I think, moving forward, we will see more than just, you know, rebates and, and other things that, that the government provides. And, and we can get into those requirements, it's, it's not here yet, but it's coming, I think.
But, but the state building codes have been adjusted now for a lot of these sustainable provisions, I believe, that the new one is gonna be pretty, you know, heat pumps are required in new, in new construction, and I think, John, that you have to at least put the general connection for EV charger, at least lay the wiring while you're building the new house.
That makes sense.
There's some really great things, and that sounds like that's sort of the implementation part of something like this.
Energy efficiency and providing for, yeah, for electric vehicle charging. It does, that does make sense. Okay.
Should this, should this section, I mean, we were likely to have a sustainability element, climate change element in the, in the near future.
Right.
Should some, should this be expanded upon, this idea of sustainable development? I mean, this is
It's pretty generic and
Well, it's pretty, it's pretty thin.
Do we wanna enumerate some of the things that we're talking about for requirements? Okay, yeah.
And I see Commissioner Burkhar has this.
Yeah, thanks, I, I, my other comment was kind of a point of levity, but it does bring up something else on this, if we did wanna look to expand it, it's kind of more of a, from a techn, technological standpoint, I mean, there's oh, district heating systems and things like that, I mean, there's a lot on the technological horizon, well, not even horizon, it's happening in other places that it may be wise to incorporate in, into a comp plan as something our community would want to promote, so I'm not sure where exactly our current codes and standards sit with things like that, but there's actually quite a bit, you know, we could do in, in some of our developments to, to make them much more, less energy intense.
Okay.
I don't know how, you know, where we would add to that, but this may be an appropriate spot.
Yep, agreed.
It's a, it's a good, you know, that's, and that's, that's a good example of a, of a goal, right? That could be, that could be included, either here or someplace else in the, in the comp plan to promote, enhance, encourage, you know, those sorts of words around that type of development, and, and we can call out some of those ideas that Commissioner Burkhar just, just described, and then, of course, the implementation piece of that is trying to get it into the zoning code, or into the building code in some way, now, our building codes, of course, we, we adopt those, we adopt what the state requires us to adopt. And then we do have some amendments, and the local jurisdictions have the ability to add amendments to our building codes that are more specific to Gig Harbor. And of course, we get those approved through the state, Washington State Building Council weighs in on, on those amendments, but so there's, so there's, there is opportunity, if, you know, if we so chose to look at more stringent standards for sustainable building codes and neighborhood design.
Okay. Uh, next we have, this looks familiar. We are in waterfront design. And we're back to visual points of interest, so preserve visual points of interest within the waterfront. Again, these are, these are things that we've seen before, but incorporate points of interest into building and landscape design is a little bit of a different take on that. Designs that frame points of interest between architectural forms and landscaping that is complementary to points of interest without, of course, obscuring views. Thoughts, questions?
Just one, when we have design elements, or elements that we're talking about, like here, that are the same and different elements of, of the overall plan, the language should be consistent. And we might wanna discuss whether we need to say the same thing a second time.
I hear you.
I feel like if we had a meeting, or through the process of this comp plan, we fleshed out the neighborhood areas, this would be something that would get factored into that.
Interesting, okay, yeah. Okay. Next, also within the waterfront design subheading, identify, preserve, and develop an appropriate waterfront architecture. Respecting established waterfront architecture, referencing structures in Millville, Donkey Creek areas, traditional fishing industry structures, nets, sheds, of course. It does allow for modern interpretation of historic structure designs, which we haven't seen too much of. Limit mass and scale, and building materials limited to those characteristic of historic structures. Again, similar to what we've seen before in the harbor, but slightly different, more specific design elements here. Thoughts, questions?
If these are specific kind of to the harbor, why aren't they in the harbor? Did I miss something on the meeting last time?
No, well, the harbor element, right, there is some, there is some duplication, it's, it's I mean, we could compare, and, and we will, as, as we, you know, go through these, again, I'm just sort of eliciting thoughts and questions and things, but that's, that's a, that's a good one, right? And it goes to the, the point that Commissioner Bradbury made, you know, if we're gonna say the same thing in different ways and different elements, it should be consistent, or we should pick and choose, if there's a different context, because this is specific to design and the harbor element is everything, you know, differentiate or, or, or pick, maybe, is, is one approach.
Is the harbor the only waterfront area in Gig Harbor? Because I think, certainly in Purdy, we have buildings and homes and businesses that are located on the water.
Sure.
And I think there might be some other properties, residential properties that are located on the water.
In the, within the city boundary, I'm not aware of other waterfront properties. Now, the UGA, yeah, yeah.
We have a few, just a couple up north, and Commissioner Burkhar could probably speak to at least a couple of them.
Yeah, we're, we're in the last one. Yeah, there's this, the city does come up and touch touch Henderson Bay on the very north end of Burnham, yeah, we're actually the last lot in the city limits, yeah. And then, of course, along Soundview Two, which isn't necessarily in the harbor proper, it's
Yeah.
Outside the harbor, but yeah.
So.
So it's waterfront generally, like, maybe I'm off-base, sorry. There's more to Big Gig Harbor than I thought.
I, yeah, good point.
Wonder if that should either be within the harbor element, or if there should be a waterfront overlay that addresses things like sustainability with rising tides, or, or earthquake risk, or any of those kinds of things that, and that would be overlaid across all of these areas, and it wouldn't matter that whether it's a residential structure or a commercial structure, it would be more about preserving, well, respecting what may happen in the future with environmental, with climate change, and, and respecting new corridors, those kinds of things, if most of those elements, cuz it, it does seem like most of this is actually focused on the harbor, in which case it should be in the harbor element. And as far as that last one, limiting building materials to those characteristics of Gig Harbor's historic structures, I bring us back to those duplexes that are across from the Harbor History Museum, that wasn't done. I don't know if that's necessarily detrimental to that, if we're unnecessarily limiting ourselves by having that statement in. It's the materials specifically that I
Yeah. Yeah, sometimes some of the policies seem to be kind of either an afterthought or something somebody thought of, and they kind of tossed in, but I mean, I, I understand the, the purpose, but it's a good question, does this, does this belong here? Does this section of waterfront design belong entirely within the harbor section, notwithstanding the pieces properties that touch on Henderson Bay and other parts of, of the waterfront? So, a question we can mull over, we can pose to, to, to the community?
Can I, on, on the historic materials piece, that's something that the Design Review Board has, has, you know, talked a lot about in the Historic Preservation, folks who are on the Design Review Board have talked about, and there's a lot of debate out there when we, when we update some of these historic structures, about whether or not we should be taking that structure back to its original look and feel to the T, or whether or not there is room for some interpretation, you know, I've heard a lot from people that, you know, a new, a new building can also be historic, right? In some ways, it depends on when it was built, how it was built. So, I think it's, I think it's a really good point about, about, about the materials, I would also ask that, you know, characteristic of Gig Harbor's historic structures, so those building materials, I mean, that's, I think that's, it's difficult probably to define what that is, I mean, are we talking about, you know, our design manual talks about window sills and the, the muttons and all the pieces of the windows and, you know, and trim and things like that, I mean, if that's what we're talking about, then I suppose we've implemented some of that in, in some ways already, but I'll also say that it, it becomes very difficult and increasingly more difficult for folks to renovate their homes or go through restoration projects and try and meet those standards without going to the Design Review Board and asking for some forgiveness, because it's hard to find things like that, and oftentimes, they're taking a modern element and making it, making it look historic, right, which then gives it that sort of faux feel. So, I, you know, I think there's, I think there's room for, for discussion around how we administer the historic district design codes.
And the interesting bullet point, this is allow modern interpretation of historic structure designs, I mean, that's
Yeah, which one do we want here? Yeah.
Do we want to adhere to the sort, you know, to be very, very purist in that?
Mr. Solstice, you got forty-five seconds.
Oh. Now, I'll say never mind then.
No, that's, that's okay, go ahead. Okay, we're right here at the eight o'clock hour. I did, Robin sent you an email today, I don't know if you had a chance to read it or not, but we did have discussion last time about let the minutes reflect ideas where we have a particularly important point that we wanted to raise, did you have a chance to check what the powers that be on that?
Not, I mean, not other than this power that, that he needs. No, I think, I think where he sort of landed was if there was, if there was something that so, so as everyone knows, I, I put together the notes that I made from two weeks ago, I'm more than happy to do that each time and to send them out and to keep a file of all those notes. But if, if there are things that we want, the commission wants specifically in the minutes, then that would be separate action, a separate request, isn't that where we sort of?
I think, yeah, I think, I think that's where we landed, if there's something that, that the commissioners want to have reflected specifically in the minutes, then it would have to be noted, and I would say the best way to do that is for the commissioner to ask the chair to have that, to, to please have that reflected in the minutes, and then the chair would ask staff to make sure that that was reflected now, and Michelle, you might wanna chime in here in a minute, but we are switching over to a different system here soon, so we used to use something called AV Capture All, which allowed us to essentially capture all of the, of what goes on within the public meeting, and, and in that, we were able to take more comprehensive minutes, and it would record those for us, am I, am I getting that right?
He had basically listened to them the next, we listened to them the next day to do that, but Josh said that there's no changing.
Okay. The way that we're doing them now?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so the city clerk is telling us that this is how we're going to do the minutes, now there is the way we're doing it now, so I will re nag on everything that I just said, I think, but what I will say is that we are changing to a new what is it going to be called, the new platform, it's
Platform that's supposed to take minutes and do the agenda for us.
Right. So with that Okay, so will there be, so there might be some allowance within this new program that we're gonna be using that would, that would do what the planning commission is asking for, so I think for now, what we can offer are the notes that Robin is, is keeping and providing to commissioners. And I don't know if there's any need to formalize those notes as part of the minutes when planning commission approves, I mean, we could, we could look at that too, I suppose. Yeah, but I also, I also don't know if there's any reason or benefit in doing something like that.
Okay. Eric, is everybody okay with that?
Well, I think the minutes are minimal, I mean, they're really just you know, who's here, what was talked about, have a nice day, love Michelle, and and it's really, yeah, it's really the barest of minimums, minutes I've ever seen in any kind of organization, I'll just say that. But if, if you, if, for example, Robin, if you would include in your notes the fact that we're gonna have it was proposed to have a separate breakout meeting on community design, that's kind of the thing you put in your notes, that would help a little bit, John, I think.
Okay.
That would make it to that.
And I think, you know, to this point, and I, and I, we, we talked to the city clerk about this, of course, but if there is some formal action taken by the planning commission, which might be, yes, we all agree and take a vote on, we want to have another meeting that's just focused on those design areas. might be, yes, we all agree and take a vote on, we want to have another meeting that's just focused on those design areas that, of course, would make its way into the minutes automatically because it was action taken. So I know it's kind of formal, and we're a less formal body, and we like that as staff, we'd like to keep it that way, too, and hopefully it works for planning commissioners. If at any time you don't feel like it's formal enough and you and you want it more formal, we're happy to go there as well. But we could formalize some of that through, you know, through that kind of an action of, you know, a vote that would then make it, then would be in the minutes. So that I think that's the best, those are the best options that we have at the moment, Chair.
Okay, thank you. So let's see. Is there any desire to go on? We could take a vote to go on, but I don't know, I'm getting kind of tired, so maybe you guys are. Okay. Okay. All right, I will be absent next meeting, so my wingman to my right here is going to take over for me, so.
So everybody study up, okay?
He's a hard taskmaster, much worse than I am. Okay, in that case, then our next meeting is May eighteenth, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay. Which in a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you very much. And I'll see you when I get back.